Good morning. The time is now 9:00 a.m. I will call the Lake County Planning Commission meeting for April 14, 2022 to order. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Before we get started, we would like to address the approval of the minutes for the March 10, 2022, and the March 24, 2022 Planning Commission hearing. Any discussion or motion?
Madam Chair, just one typo on page two of the March 10 minutes. I'm making reference to saying something is moot, but it's written as mute here in the minutes.
Thank you for that clarification.
That's just a term of art, so moot is better. Thanks.
Thank you.
Otherwise, those minutes look fine to me.
So we have a motion?
I move that the Commission adopt the, accept the minutes of the March 10, 2022 meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And in regards to the March 24, 2022 minutes?
I similarly move that the Commission adopt the minutes from March 24, 2022.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good morning. We will go ahead with any citizens' input. If anyone would like to speak on items that are not listed on the agenda today, right now would be the time to do so. Good morning, Jake. Do we have any hands in the Zoom room for any citizens' input?
Morning. At this time, no. There are no hands raised in the Zoom room.
Okay, and not seeing anyone wishing to participate in the chambers. I'm showing a untimed staff update on the agenda. We are going to move that to the end of the meeting. And as of right now, we will bring up our 9:05 meeting, or excuse me, item at 9:05. Time now is 9:02. Time is now 9:05. We will take up our first agenda item. This was continued from March 24, 2022, public hearing on consideration of a design review, DR 21-01, and a mitigated negative declaration, IS 22-06. The applicant, Nikki Island, is proposing a small resort containing nine overnight lodging units, conversion of the existing dwelling to a social gathering room, lobby, kitchen, and dining room, outdoor kitchen, excuse me, in-ground pool and hot tub, site improvements including removal of 1,100-plus square feet of asphalt in the western driveway leading to Highway 20, landscaping, parking, and interior access aisles and pedestrian pathways. The project location is 5835 and 5825 Highway 20, Lusanne, California, and further described as APNs 034-421-20 and 034-421-21.
And legal determination has been determined on this matter?
Legal determination has been what? Determined on this matter?
Yes.
Thank you. Eric?
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, Nicole, go ahead.
Was the sentence "legal determination was determined"?
He wasn't able to say it on his mic. Jim, if you want to repeat what you said.
Legal notice?
Legal notice. Hold on, we're gonna get him to get his.
Legal notice has been determined on this.
Okay, legal notice, because I heard, I'm sorry, my apologies. I heard "legal determination was determined."
That's probably what I said. Thank you, Nicole, and thank you, Jim. Eric, I know we went through your staff report previously, but we're excited to see it again.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Commissioners and members of the audience. This is continued hearing from March 24 regarding a small resort at the location indicated by the chairman. Nikki Island is the name of the project. Nicole Farb is the applicant and property owner, co-owned with her husband. So having gone through this report before, I'm gonna touch on the highlights primarily and not go through all the details that I had previously gone through on March 24. We're having momentary technical issues here. All right, thank you, Sam. Okay, getting back to the project. So we're gonna cover the requests, the scope of the project, the analysis of the project, the sequo analysis, and finally, a recommendation. As the chair indicated, the request is for a small resort at the location identified in the opening statement. APNs are 034-421-20 and 21. Combined size is 1.56 acres. Zoning is resort commercial, floodway fringe, waterway, and design review overlay, which is why we're here today to cover the design review overlay portion of it. The property is entirely within the AO floodplain, and the general plan has this, these properties identified as resort commercial and resource conservation. Here are the properties by the yellow arrows. The area immediately north and south are similarly zoned. The area across the highway is residential, high-density residential. Scope of the project is in the site plan that's been included in your packet. The chair read the highlights of the merits of the project in the opening statement. Front view of the property, it is on the lake. It's very scenic, pastoral setting. And again, one and a half acres, it's not a large property, but it's certainly large enough to accommodate the proposed resort development. These are samples of what the lodging units will look like. They're referred to by the applicant as being casitas, which are not identified in our code, so we're calling them overnight lodging units. Analysis, we compared this project against the general plan, shoreline communities area plan, and the applicable portions of the zoning ordinance, and we were able to make the finding that it complies with each of these three documents. So Article 54.4 Design Review has eight findings that are required for approval. We were able to make the findings. The site is zoned for resort commercial. This uses, debatably, what this zone is intended for. Site is adequate in terms of size, location, and physical characteristics. We were able to make that finding. The project's scope is fairly small, and the scale is appropriate for the area. There are adequate public services such as fire protection, water, sewer, and power. The site is accessed from Highway 20, and it is served by public utilities, powers available to the site. Complies with all applicable plans. Purpose of this staff report is to identify the applicable zoning ordinances, the general plan, and the applicable area plan, and to assess the compliance of the project with these plans. Number five, the placement and design of the buildings is compatible with existing development. I've indicated the lake-frenning side of Highway 20 in this location is characterized by one-story buildings. The existing house and proposed casitas are one-story and will not detract from the character of the area. The project is in conformance with applicable community design manual criteria. We've reviewed it thoroughly against the shoreline communities area plan, which has community design criteria within it, and we were able to make the finding that it complies. Number seven, streets, highways, and pedestrian facilities are adequate to safely accommodate the use. Site fronts on Highway 20, which is not intended specifically for pedestrian use. In fact, pedestrians, due to the speed of traffic, generally don't use most of the highway. However, there are shoulders that vary in width from two feet to eight feet on the side of the highway. The highway itself is intended for vehicle use, which is how vehicles would access the site. Number eight, no violations of Chapters 5, 10, 21, 23, or 26 of the Lake County Code exist on the property. There are no documented violations on either lot associated with the project. Article 17 Resort Commercial District names hotels and motels, when not exceeding 15 units, as being a by-right use, meaning the only thing required would be design review due to the DR overlay zone. And on subsection C, it talks about commercial accessory uses and accessory structures, which would cover the pertinent facilities that are being proposed by the applicant. So we were able to make the finding that it complies with Article 17. Sequa, initially, we were going to categorically exempt it due to the scale. However, after internal discussion on it, we decided to go ahead and pursue an initial study review, which resulted in a mitigated negative declaration. That primarily pertaining to potential impacts associated with the visual aspect of the project. However, no trees are being removed by this project, so the tree removal issue is not an issue. The applicant is going to be planting additional trees, vegetation, and shrubbery. There are plans in place to make the site more attractive, and that includes the structures, the maintenance to the existing house, and the on-the-ground amenities that are being proposed by the applicant. So when we sent out the initial study to the State Clearinghouse, staff received no adverse comments regarding this proposal. The only comment that stands out in my mind is from Caltrans, who support the removal of one of the two driveways leading to the highway. There was a concern raised by the neighbor. I touched on this during the last hearing. They were concerned about potential noise, traffic, lighting, and other impacts that could impact his property and the quality of life. We put mitigation measures in place that limited construction days and hours. Again, removed one of the two driveways leading to Highway 20. The applicant is proposing to visually screen the entire property, not just the one from the neighbor who had concerns. And there will be an onsite manager during the daytime and an onsite staff member at night. So there will be people available to mitigate noise or other issues that may be associated with the guests that are using the facility. So our recommendation is for the Planning Commission to adopt initial study, IS 2206, and to approve design review, DR 2101, with conditions. And without, I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Eric. Do any Commissioners have any questions for staff? And I believe the applicant is available via Zoom.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
For, a question either for Mr. Porter or the applicant. In addition to people arriving with their cars, is the property able to accommodate things like a boat that they bring along? Or jet skis? Are there areas where those things would be stored if people wanted to make use of the lake?
I believe there's a boat dock tied to the property. Take a look at the site plan to make sure it's shown. I'm looking at Vanderwall Site Plan. Actually, it's Landscape Plan. And it does show the ramp leading to the boat dock. And so, to my knowledge, they would be able to moor a boat. Yeah, it's shown on here on the Vanderwall Site Plan. And so there will be a dock where they can park boats.
I was wondering more. The car has to tow that boat. And is there a place where the, where what you tow it with can be stored? Or is, does, can the property accommodate that in some way? And Eric, if that's an applicant question, that's fine.
It may be shown on the site plan, Commissioner. Let me take a look.
Jake, do you by chance see a hand from the applicant if they are able to clarify or help Eric in any way?
Yes, I do actually have the applicant here. I will give them permission to speak. And it looks like they are muted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Nicole Farb.
Great, thank you. We can hear you.
Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Nicole. Thank you. That's a wonderful question. Thank you for asking. We do have a boat dock to confirm what Eric shared. Right now, our current property wouldn't accommodate a boat, so someone driving in. But we have been working with Disney's Boat Rental to encourage use of the lake and encourage commerce with the rental company.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
If we don't have any further questions from the Commissioners at this time, I can open it up for public comment.
I have a few questions.
Sure.
Eric, can you please refresh me on the, who did the cultural resource study? When the last study was done for this property? One of the concerns I have is, this is a, this is a known historical village site, pre-contact. And so I, I don't have any specific information or any reports that I was able to access to, to look at any of that type of information. So I'm concerned with the conditions, one and two, under cultural and tribal resources, that those resources will be protected.
My recollection is that Dr. John Parker with Wolf Creek Archaeology did the survey. I believe it was done in year 2020. I may have to defer that question to the applicant.
Yeah, I can answer that question. This is previously developed land, but we did have a cultural resources study done. It was actually natural investigations, Cindy, and she completed it in September of 2020.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. So public comment is open. Anyone wishing to speak on this item in chambers? I don't see any hands or anyone approaching the podium. Jake, anyone for public comment on this item in the Zoom room?
I have a hand raised from the applicant, but I think that is from earlier. The hand is lowered, as I think we're good to go now. There's no hands raised in the Zoom room.
Okay.
I have a question for the applicant.
Okay.
So my question is just, so how did the idea about making this resort in Lake County come about? And just kind of what you hope to bring to, to Lake County?
Oh, that, that question makes me so happy. So I'm a mom of two children, and I come from a big family. And when we were young, we used to camp at Yosemite, and they had similar structures, cabins, where we could all play and run free with our cousins. And when we live, we're from San Francisco, and we feel like local areas like Napa have sort of priced us out of that type of thing, and so has Tahoe. And we'd looked at Clear Lake for a long time as just this beautiful natural resource where you could gather with your family and run free. And so we have been studying Clear Lake for about seven years, looking for our perfect destination where we could build something like this, where families can come and enjoy the natural resources, the lake, the hiking, some of the local wineries. So we're very excited about it.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
We will, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the Commission for action.
I don't, I don't have any further questions, and we be prepared to make a motion.
Please.
Okay, I move that the Planning Commission find that the major use permit, UP 19-21, applied for by, applied for by Spring Valley Org, this is the wrong motion, is it? Is it Spring Valley Organics?
Nope. We're on, yes, I did, I did close public comment. Here, you can read this one.
Thank you. So I move that the Planning Commission find that the project applied for by Nicole Farb, project located at 5835 and 5825 State Highway 20. Lucerne identified as Assessor Parcel Number 034-421-20 and 034-421-21. Will have measures that will reduce potential impacts to less than significant levels through the mitigation measures set forth within the initial study, IS 22-06, and with the findings listed in the staff report dated April 14, 2022.
I second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, I'd like to entertain the next motion. I move that the Planning Commission find that the design review permit, DR 21-01, applied for by Nicole Farb, property located at 5835 and 5825 State Highway 20. Lucerne has identified as Assessor Parcel Number 034-421-20 and 034-421-21, meets requirements of Section 54.5 of the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and hereby approve the design review permit with the findings listed in the staff report dated April 14, 2022.
I second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, excuse me. Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the Planning Commission's decision, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 p.m. or before the seventh calendar day following the Planning Commission's final determination.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Moving on to our second agenda item. It's a public hearing on consideration of major use permit, UP 19-21, and a mitigated negative declaration, IS 19-37. The applicant, Joyce Kierstein, Spring Valley Organics, is proposing one A-type III outdoor license, outdoor cultivation for adult-use cannabis without the use of light deprivation and/or artificial lighting in the canopy area at any point in time from 10,001 square feet to one acre, inclusive of total canopy size per license on one premise. And a 13, or excuse me, and a Type 13 distributor transport-only self-transportation, distributor transport-only self-transport, transport distribution license, the transport of cannabis goods between entities licensed pursuant to California Code. The project is located at 2593 New Long Valley Road, Clear Lake Oaks, California, Assessor Parcel Number 620-071-04.
And legal determination, our legal notice has been determined on this matter?
Do I need to, do I need to repeat that? I don't think it's max working.
If you think the microphone hasn't been working. Legal notice has been determined on this matter.
Thank you, Jim. Good morning, staff. Kim, do we have you over on the, in the Zoom room? Jake, can you check with Kim to make sure that her audio is hooked up to do her presentation? Or that she can be unmuted, please?
I have a Kim Hunter?
Perfect.
Okay. Kim, I've given you permission to unmute? And Kim, I've asked you to unmute? I am not getting a response from Kim at this moment.
Does she have her hand raised or any type of communication with her via chat?
Hi, this is, this is Kim.
Good morning, Kim. We can hear you.
Sorry, there was a hiding little, a little notice hiding on my screen. I apologize for that. I am here, and good morning.
Good morning.
This is Kim Hunter with Lake O Associates, and yes, I will be presenting today. This is, as, as announced, a major use permit for Spring Valley Organics. Next slide, please. The project number is Use Permit 1921 for Spring Valley Organics. The location is at 2593 New Long Valley Road, Clear Lake Oaks, Parcel Number 620-071-04. The applicant is Spring Valley Organics, associated with Radiant Revolution Enterprises LLC. The property owner is Joyce Kierstein, and the planner is Andrew Amalong, the Cannabis Program Manager. Next slide. It's a very straightforward permit request. It's for a commercial cannabis cultivation operation. The request is for one adult-type III outdoor cultivation license for up to one-acre canopy, along with a Type 13 self-distribution license. The parcel is just a smidge over 20 acres, so it meets the requirement for this license type. The submittal date of the application was June 20, 2019, and an early activation permit was issued in 2019, and that number was EA 1921. The slide before you shows the site plan. Access is off of New Valley, New Long Valley Road. There is a 350-foot driveway, which will be improved with a turnaround to meet 4290 and 4291 standards. And a cultivation site you can see there. It is not a full-acre canopy. It's actually going to be under an acre canopy around 30,000 square, 30,000 square feet, 29, 439 square feet, with a support area, a larger support area, approximately 32,000 square feet. Next slide. The base zoning for the site is rural lands. There's a, a few applicable combining districts for the projects, which include the waterway combining district, floodway fringe combining district, scenic combining district, and the density combining district, which is a five-acre minimum. Long Valley Creek does run through the, pretty much the center of the parcel. If you're looking at that slide, you see Parcel 620-071-04. You can slightly see the cultivation site up near the road, Long Valley Road. You can slightly see the cultivation site up near the road, Long Valley Road to the north, and then the riparian area going through the center of the parcel. The general plan is rural lands. This site is also falls under the Shoreline Communities Planning Area. And parcels within the zone are very similar zoning with the rural lands, with the exception of the parcel up there on the north, which is a little bit darker green. That's an ag preserve parcel there to the north and northeast. Next slide. Here's a vicinity map of the area in Long Valley. It's within Supervisor District 3. The parcel is located approximately three miles north of Clear Lake Oaks. Next slide. As mentioned, the outdoor canopy is proposed to be under, well, under an acre of canopy, 29,439 square feet, with the cultivation area at 34,000 square feet, just a little bit over. This will be only one fence cultivation area, which you can see it's in kind of a triangular shape. That cultivation site is right at 100 feet from, from the property line. So it's, it's exact setback to that northern property line and Long Valley Road. Four employee parking spaces, including an ADA compliant space, will be developed for the site. And the property, as I mentioned, is accessed by a fairly long driveway, 350-foot driveway from New Long Valley Road. Next slide. The project scope. There are definitely improvements, as with any cultivation site recommended or proposed for this project. That includes a 1,400-square-foot immature plant greenhouse and 2,400-square-foot processing facility, which will include an ADA compliant restroom and an employee break room. There is an existing septic system on site, which will need to be approved by environmental health for use. There was damage to the property during the 2018 Mendocino complex fire. And so that, there is no longer a residence on the property. That residence was burnt in the property and no longer exists. And so that septic system is not currently being used associated with the residence. There is an existing groundwater well, which will be used for the cultivation operation. Next site, or side. Also proposed are three 200-square-foot storage sheds. These sheds will be for storage for the nutrients, fertilizers, pesticides, equipment, and guarding tools. Two 2,500-gallon tanks are proposed for the site. There's a picture of one right there. One will be for fire suppression and one will be for a nutrient mixing tank for the cultivation. And then again, four employee parking spaces. There'll also be a loading zone included with the development of the parking area. The site is located in Long Valley. The elevation ranges from 1,230 to 1,280 feet above sea level. The cultivation site is, is very flat. And so there, as you can see from the photos, there is not much slope at all, if any, on that, on that area where the cultivation will occur. It is, of course, included in the Long Valley Creek watershed, the property, the vicinity. And most vegetation, trees, and the residents were affected by the 2018 Mendocino complex fire, as, as previously mentioned. Next slide. Project analysis. Regulations reviewed for compliance with this project included the Lake County General Plan, the Shoreline Communities Area Plan, the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and of course, state regulations. Next slide. For the general plan, the site is rural lands, general plan designation. The oper, the operation and proposed activities do not conflict with any policies in the general plan. With that said, as you are aware, there are no specific policies addressing commercial cannabis cultivation in the general plan. Next slide. The Shoreline Community Area Plan. Policies that do apply are the scenic view sheds within the planning area shall be protected. And also to promote alternatives to open burning and disposal of vegetative waste, including chipping, mulching, and composting. The project operation does intend to compost vegetative waste and is compliance with policy 4.3.1C of the Shoreline Communities Plans, as well as the scenic view sheds are being protected. For the project analysis with the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, due to the high number of, of districts that do apply, we have quite a few articles here and areas of the zoning code that do apply to this project and were considered in the analysis. And that includes the rural lands. Use is generally permitted, which is Article 27. Special lot size and density combining district, scenic combining district, floodway fringe combining district, and waterway combining district. Next slide. Regarding the scenic combining district, this is an outdoor cultivation. No structures are proposed within the scenic combining district, which is shown in the, the green, the lighter green bubble there that does touch on the property. New Valley, New Long Valley Road is identified as a potential scenic corridor by the Shoreline Communities Area Plan. However, due to the outdoor cultivation and the situation, the prop, the project is compliant with the scenic combining district. Next slide. For SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, a mitigated negative declaration has been proposed for this project. All identified impacts to resources can be mitigated and reduced to less than significant impacts. The proposed mitigated negative declaration and initial study were submitted to the state clearinghouse and, and notice to the public. That comment period, the 30-day comment period, was from June 15th, 2021 to July 16th, 2021. Mitigations that have been proposed for this project are outlined in Attachment 3, which is a proposed conditions of approval and attachment for the initial study. Next slide. The SEQA initial study found that the project could cause potential impacts to resources, but mitigated to a less than significant impact with mitigation. Those resources identified included aesthetics, biological resources, cultural resources, energy, geology and soils, hazards and hazardous materials, air quality, noise, tribal cultural resources, utilities and service systems, and wildfire. Some information on the site regarding the site history has come up. And I, Andrew Amalong will speak to this slide.
Yes. In reference to the early activation Kim had mentioned from 1919, or 2019, I'm sorry, that was actually issued in 2020. The site cultivated under early activation in 2020. According to the applicants, they submitted documents in late 2020 to cultivate under early activation again in 2021. Staff did not process that application for early activation at that time. However, the project was placed on a list for inspections of early activation. Okay, sorry about that. Were you able to hear all of that? Okay. So going on in 2020, while the applicants were under the impression that an early activation permit was going to be issued and they could begin cultivating, that early activation permit was never issued. And as such, on August 4th of 2021, the Lake County Sheriff's Department addressed this issue. And as a measure of abatement, they eradicated all of the plants growing in 2021.
Thank you for that. Kim, are you going to continue with your presentation or does that conclude?
I'm almost to the conclusion, just a few more slides.
Absolutely. Take your time.
Thank you. In fact, we're right there at recommendations. And, and to note, they're just following up on, on that last slide quickly. There are no current violations existing on the property. So that, with the analysis, that did, that did not come up. We did want to bring that to your attention, that that did occur. Okay, so in, for the recommendations, environmental recommendations from staff is to adopt the mitigated negative declaration for this project. Initial study IS 19-37. Next slide. And major use permit recommendations is to approve use permit UP 19-21 with the conditions of approval.
And as a follow-up note for your consideration in terms of cumulative impacts for the project, the project itself, as Kim had mentioned, is in the, I believe it's the Long Valley Creek watershed. That's part of the Cache Creek watershed, or more accurately, the middle Cache Creek watershed. Within this watershed, the county has approved eight projects. It has denied two projects and it has 14 pending projects. Cumulatively, for land use, there are 36.8 acres of canopy approved within this watershed. And based on rough projections, we can estimate there's roughly a cumulative amount of 61.21 acre-feet of water used per year for cannabis cultivation. Whereas the project itself is proposing around 2/3 of an acre and roughly 1.12 acre-feet of water, based on our projections, not the proposed water use. To really get a full accurate amount of water that they're going to be used, we will be collecting that data when we do our inspections this year.
That's a helpful slide. I like that.
And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you for that. And thank you, Kim. Any discussion from the commissioners before we open it up to public comment?
I have a question. So I'm looking at information. Was there any comment from any of the public or anybody in regards to this project? And one specific comment I'm looking for is from the Yochudihi tribe located in Cache Creek in Brooks, California. Were they noticed of this project?
I believe so. They had been noticed. This project had gone through two known planners prior to moving on to myself and our consultants at Laco. Through our records and everything we have on file, we didn't, not have any comments that we had received at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. Anybody wishing to speak on the item? Is the applicant here? Or, okay. Any hands in the Zoom room, Jake, while we have it open for public comment?
No, at this time, there are no hands raised in the Zoom room.
Okay. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
Sure, I have a question. So since operation or since you guys started construction there, have there any, have there been any contacts with neighbors? Any concerns raised by neighbors or anybody that was interested in, in the, in the project?
And for you to respond, you had just come on up here. Please be sure to state your first and last name and there might be a green sheet there for you to fill out, just when you have a moment.
Hello, good morning. My name is Valerie Ping. I'm the owner of Radiant Revolution Enterprises and the owner of this project. The only concerns were raised is, to be honest, the helicopter from the sheriff's department. When they came out, they were scared. But that's the only thing, because they didn't really know what was going on. And we didn't really know what was going on. So there was just that, that the neighbors came and talked to me about. But other than that, I've had nothing but support in the area thus far. And yeah, that's about it.
Another question. How many plants were seized by the sheriff's department?
11,000. So they were, yeah, 11,000.
Yeah, I have 11,553.
And what stage was that on of the project?
Of the cycle of the plant? It was in the, what day was that?
It was August 4th.
Yes, it was August. So it was in the first, the first stages of flower.
Okay. So another question would be, following that, is knowing that you guys weren't issued early activation and you guys were waiting for a notice, thinking that the application had gone through or?
No, we actually thought we were given early activation. And then when they came out for the site visit, it says like what status your cultivation is in. And it says early activation on the site visit document. So the compliance officer gave that to us. And I mean, they said that we were fine. They weren't sure if we were going to need early activation, because at the time, Lake County wasn't sure if they were providing early activation. So we were in this kind of limbo stage where we were given a state license. So we were fully state compliant with metric tags on everything. And the state and the county had spoke and approved the project for the state license. So we were completely state licensed and yeah, it was a gray area, I guess. And when we had our planner changes, they weren't sure either. And I asked if we should be cultivating and they said that's up to us. And they're not sure if they would be giving early activations yet. And that it was put through two different planners after that. And finally, we got Satir. And she put the comments into the state so that they can do the initial study, was it? Yeah, so that they can do that. So this is an older project. And I have, I mean, I've worked on a few projects in Lake County. This is definitely an older one. I think it just slipped through the cracks within the changes the department had, really, to be honest. And yeah, we're just trying to move forward and be positive.
Okay, yeah, that was another one of my questions of how the whole process was going, like, the plants were tagged and numbered and everything was?
Yeah, I had to destroy everything in the metric system. And then this, that, that initiated the state to come out. And so they came out for an inspection after that and they were like, ah, what happened? And I'm like, well, they cut them down. And so they're like, but why? And I said, they said we're out of compliance. And he said, but you have a state license. They approved it. And then I said, yeah, but they're saying that they didn't issue us a proper EA and they're, they were confused at the time with changes within their department. So he said that he just never even seen anything like that. So I guess it was just a mistake, to be honest. And he said, he said that he thought it was just a mistake and gave me a number to call. And so to make sure that in the system, it doesn't look like I just, because it looks like I just destroyed the plants and doesn't, don't want to pay taxes. So I had to take pictures of everything and then turn it into, to verify that this is what had happened.
And that it was eradicated.
And that it was eradicated, yeah. Otherwise, I would have, they would have wanted the taxes on it. Another thing is that we still owe taxes on that property now. So I'm going to go to the tax department after this to see, because we, we shouldn't have to pay taxes on anything unless we're going to cultivate. And this year, I'm not sure we are going to cultivate because of the just financial status of the company. We're still making a decision after today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead, you can say?
And to follow up, and you know, there appears to have been a misunderstanding. However, the early activation was never issued, so the sheriff's department acted accordingly.
And he did say sorry. The sheriff said sorry because he realized there was some kind of mix-up. Satir did call him when I was there, and they didn't cut down everything. But then the water system was messed up, so it, yeah, it didn't work out for that last year, but we still moved forward with this year, so.
Okay, I'm going to officially, Jake, is there any hands in the Zoom room before I close public comment?
No, there are no hands raised in the Zoom room at this time.
Okay, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion and possible action.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
I guess the only concern I have just is the process of the way the project was handled over, over the span of the project, not having in front of me any of the comments, any previous comments regarding the project. Again, I know this area to be very sensitive with cultural resources. That's why I was surprised that the Yochuadihi tribe did not comment. This is their affiliated area. A lot of historic events in their tribe's history took place there. So I just, you know, even not having the information to look at is concerning, and that's no fault of the applicant. But all the documents that have led up to this point, it's some work to have to go and track those documents down to follow the project and look at some of the comments previously. So I guess that's my concern, is that I'm not seeing any comments, you know, that have followed. I don't know, again, if they were noticed, you know, they were noticed. So that's just, I guess, not a comment about the project specifically, what's happening today in front of us, but just in terms of the kind of big picture of what's going on out there, so that's it.
If I may interject, this is Kim.
Hi, Kim.
Hi, I was looking through the files during the discussion. A letter was received from the, I don't want to mispronounce this, Yochuadihi Cultural Resources on July 23rd, 2019. They made a determination, this is not within their Aboriginal territories, and they declined to comment. But a letter was received, and I apologize for that not being in the staff packet. I can send it to somebody if you would like to see it, though. I could email it.
Yeah, I think just to have it to look at.
Okay, I'll do that right now.
Just in response, I know, you know, 2019 is a few years back. I know there's a change. Yochuadihi is actually a sister tribe to my tribe, so we, and I've worked with their cultural resource department. I know there's a change, but that doesn't affect anything here. Just want to make sure they were notified.
Kim, do you have the ability to go ahead and forward that to someone to make sure that Commissioner Brown can receive that?
Yes, I'm getting ready to email it right now. If there's a, if I should email it to Andrew or Jim.
You can, Kim, this is Director Darby. You can email it to me at mary.darby@lakecounty.ca.gov.
Okay, I will do that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. And it looks like the applicant would like to say something as well. Please be sure to state your first and last name.
Sufjan Hamuda with Lake County Planning Consultants. I'm representing Valerie. Sorry, public comment is closed, I know. But I just wanted to comment for the cultural resource. As you may have seen on the site plans, we did have Dr. John Parker out on the property in 2019, and they did find potentially significant resources within an area that we did mark. As part of mitigations, we actually included a 50-foot setback. He also did mark out the area, so that is completely staked out. So I just wanted to kind of address that there were, you know, potentially significant things found for cultural resources, but mitigations are in place for that. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sorry, this is Valerie Ping, once again. Just to kind of comment on what you are talking about, Big Valley Renterio was also informed. My daughters are both tribal members there, and also the Lower Lake Tribe as well.
Thank you.
So if no further discussion, we are looking for motion.
I'm ready, prepared to make a motion if there's no further comments.
Please, Dr. Darby?
I was just questioning whether or not you wanted to hold for the letter from Kim Hunter.
Oh, would you like to hold off on that?
How long is that going to, how long do you think?
I am uploading my computer right now, and it should just be a couple of seconds.
Okay. Before we make a motion, we can just wait for that, just let him review it.
I apologize, but the email has not come through yet.
Okay, we can, I know it's there. If it's there, it's, you know, I know what the notice is going to look like, so we can move forward if we'd like to do that.
Thank you.
I move that the planning commission find that the major use permit UP 19-21 applied for by Spring Valley Organics on property located on 2593 New Long Valley Road, Clearlake Oaks, further described as APN 620-071-04, will not have a significant effect on the environment and therefore a mitigated negative declaration. An accompanying mitigation monitoring and reporting plan shall be approved with the findings listed in the staff report dated April 8th, 2022.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the planning commission find that the major use permit UP 19-21 applied for by Spring Valley Organics on property located at 2593 New Long Valley Road, Clearlake Oaks, further described as APN 620-071-04, does meet the requirements of Section 51.4 of Article 27, Section 1 of the Lake County zoning ordinance, and a major use permit be granted subject to the conditions and with the findings listed in the staff report dated April 8th, 2022.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the planning commission, an appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh calendar day. Thank you. And thank you, Kim, for your presentation. We are moving on to our third item. This item was continued, so we are going to continue this item, but I'm going to read the description, correct?
I'm sorry. I don't understand the question.
It's okay, I'm going to start over. Item number three is a public hearing on consideration of major use permit UP 19-44 and a mitigated negative declaration IS 19-63. The applicant, Auto Cana LLC, is proposing for A Type 3 outdoor licenses. Outdoor license, outdoor cultivation for adult-use cannabis without the use of light deprivation and/or artificial lighting in the canopy area at any point in time from 10,001 square feet to one acre inclusive of any canopy size per license on the premise. And a Type 13 distributor transport-only self-transport distribution license. The transport of cannabis goods between entities licensed pursuant to the California Code. The project is located at 21258 Morgan Valley Road, Lower Lake, California, parcel number And staff?
Legal notice has been determined on this matter?
It's not on.
Legal notice has been determined on this matter?
Perfect.
Yes, concerning this project, staff has asked that the item be continued. Former staff had prepared basically an analysis to approach tree removal. However, current staff is re-examining that analysis.
Okay, and for your continuation, do you have a date certain?
Yes, May 12th.
Okay.
2022.
I move to continue item number three to May 12th, 2022. Planning Commission meeting.
Second?
Okay, moved in second, and all in favor for the continuance?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, we will revisit that item on May 12th. Our fourth agenda item is a public hearing on consideration of major use permit UP 20-13 and a mitigated negative declaration IS 20-15. The applicant, Igor Stoppler, Jerusalem Grade Farms, RMI Ventures, is proposing one A Type 3 outdoor license. Outdoor cultivation for the use of cannabis without the use of light deprivation and/or artificial lighting in the canopy area at any point in time from 10,001 square feet to one acre inclusive of canopy size per license on the premise. And a Type 13 distributor transport-only self-transport distribution license, which is the transport of cannabis goods between entities licensed pursuant to California Code. The project is located at 22644 Jerusalem Grade Road, Middletown, California, assessor parcel number 136-051-04. And staff has prepared a presentation for us.
And legal notice has been determined on this matter?
Thank you.
Okay, this is a major use permit, Jerusalem Grade Farms, RMI Ventures, use permit 2013. Are you able to hear me?
Loud and clear, you sound great.
Okay, oh, perfect, okay. And initial study 20-15, early activation has been, was issued in 2020, and that application number was 2016. Next slide. The location is at 22644 Jerusalem Grade Road, Middletown, parcel number 136-051-04. The applicant is RMI Venture. Property owners, Ryan Santiago and Andre Stoppler. And planner is Andrew Amalong, Cannabis Program Manager. Next slide. Here's a site plan. This is another project that straightforward application. The request is for a 1A adult type 3 outdoor cultivation license and a Type 13 self-distribution license. This parcel is 21.38 acres approximately, give or take, and the submittal date of the application was February 5th, 2020. Early activation, as mentioned, was issued, and that included a one acre of canopy area, 43,560 square feet. This item had been previously noticed. It was continued from the December 16th, 2021 meeting. It may look familiar to you. It was continued to allow the applicant time to complete the hydrological analysis and drought management plan. That was done, and those items are included as attachments to the staff report. Next slide. The zoning for the site is rural lands with waterway combining district. General plan is resource conservation and rural lands. And the site is within the Middletown community planning area. Parcels are zoned rural lands in the area. We see no other colors on this map. It's very consistently rural lands zoning. Next slide. The site is located in supervisory District 1 and located approximately six miles east of the intersection of Highway 29 and Spruce Grove Road. The proposed cultivation site is approximately also 3.1 miles east from the nearest community growth boundary. There's a nice aerial shot of the site. The canopy is a one-acre canopy, and the support area is 45,560 square feet of area. This includes one fence cultivation area with a six-foot security fencing, four parking spaces, with one ADA compliance space. The proposed improvements, or actually, most of them are existing. That's a picture of the shed right there. That's a 1,250-square-foot building uses processing facility, excuse, that's the barn, not the shed. 1,200-square-foot existing barn, 200-square-foot fertilizer and pesticide shed for storage, and there is one existing residence on the property. Next slide. The cultivation area is relatively flat with a less than 10% slope. There is existing septic system on the site and an existing groundwater well with a flow rate of 70 gallons per minute, which will be used for the cultivation operation. In addition, there'll be two 2,500-gallon water tanks, four 1,000-gallon water storage tanks for irrigation, one being steel fiberglass for state responsibility area fire suppression. And the water tanks will be equipped with float valves to conserve water. The elevation ranges for the site from 948 feet above sea level to 1,090 feet above sea level. And the site is located within the Upper Putah Creek/Soda Creek watershed. I'm going to just mention very quickly, there is a drainage on the property. You can see that on this visual. It's an unnamed drainage. The biological assessment describes that drainage, which is unnamed, as a Class 2/Class 3 drainage. And that does flow into, as it exits the property, Soda Creek and then to the, and to Putah Creek. Am I pronouncing that correct? Putah Creek? Does that sound right?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Okay, next slide, please. Access is from a driveway that begins at Jerusalem Grade Road. And as I mentioned, the Class 1 water course, Soda Creek, is located at the western boundary of the project parcel. Cannabis cultivation setback is a minimum of 100 feet from the top of the bank of the water bodies. Setbacks are met for this project. Setbacks are met for this project. Project analysis. Regulations reviewed for compliance included the Lake County General Plan, Middletown Communities Area Plan, Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and state regulations. The Lake County General Plan, the Rural Lands General Plan designation, this project is in compliance with that land use designation. There's no conflicting policies within the general plan that apply to this project. Next slide. For the Middletown Communities Area Plan, policies that do apply that are to this project that we wanted to highlight is that projects shall implement appropriate erosion control measures that reduce soil stability problems and landslide hazards, and that the county shall coordinate measures to protect and maintain sensitive and unique vegetation and wildlife habitat. The project is compliant with both of these policies. For the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, the applicable articles include Article 27, Article 7, and Article 37, which is uses generally permitted, rural lands, and the waterway combining district. For the waterway combining district, this is a slide again that we saw earlier. The waterway district is designated to preserve, protect, and restore significant riparian systems. With an approved major use permit, the project is compliant with the waterway combining district and it meets the established requirements. This slide illustrates the setbacks to the drainage and the waterways and is, again, compliant with all setback requirements. Next slide. For SEQA, in California Environmental Quality Act, a mitigative negative declaration is proposed. All identified impacts can be mitigated and reduced to a less than significant level. The comment period was February 12 to March 19, 2021. This, the mitigated neg deck and initial study were submitted to the state clearinghouse and notice for public comment for the 30-day required public comment period. Mitigations are outlined in the proposed conditions of approval, attachment 4 and attachment 5, which is the initial study itself. Next slide. And those resources that were found where the project could potentially cause impacts included aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, and tribal cultural resources, geology and soils, hazards and hazardous materials, hydrology, water quality, noise, and transportation. Recommendation for this project is to adopt a mitigated negative declaration, initial study IS 20-15. And major use permit, a recommendation is to approve this use permit 20-13 with the conditions of approval.
And again, to address cumulative impacts on water use, within this section of the Pootah Creek watershed, you can see it down here in the map, there are 17 approved projects. No projects have been denied in this area, and there are 17 pending projects. Overall, 36.2 acres of canopy have been approved, and roughly 59.24 acre-feet per year of water use is projected, whereas the project itself, and the slide says 1921, it should be 2013. It is proposing one acre of canopy and roughly 1.66 acre-feet of water per year projected.
Thank you for that.
And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions for staff before we open it up for public comment?
I have one question in regards to clarification. I'm sure this might just be a typo, but on the initial study, cultural resource section, culture 1, on the initial study says boundaries of archaeological sites shall be identified and fenced off, and the staff report today, culture 1, says boundaries of archaeological sites shall not be identified and fenced off. Is that just a? Is that just an error on staff's part in the staff report, or is there a change?
I'm gonna defer to Kim on this one. Can you help answer that concern?
I can, I, could you let me know the documents you cited? Could you repeat that real quick so I can?
Yeah, so in my hand, I have the staff report from today. Under cultural resources, culture 1, boundaries of archaeological sites shall not be identified and fenced off to assure the site will not be impacted during ground disturbance. And the initial study documents that were published, culture 1 says boundaries of archaeological sites shall be identified and fenced off to assure that the site will not be impacted during ground disturbance.
Okay, and we're talking about cultural resources condition of approval 1, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And so I'm just wondering if it's a typo or the, that's what it looks like to me. I just wanted to clarify.
Yes, thank you. Good catch.
Okay, thank you.
I am looking right now.
I believe it's page 16 of the staff report.
The staff report.
That he's referring to.
Okay. I see that condition, and that's what shows in the conditions of approval as well. So I need to quickly check the biological report. I mean, I'm sorry, the cultural resources assessment.
Thank you, Kim, and we'll also, you know, if it is just an error, we can always amend it and.
Yes.
With the conditions as amended here today.
It appears, it appears so. Chair, may we take a five-minute break at this point?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, and I will, I will get that confirmed.
Okay, I'm showing a time of 10:17. We will reconvene at 10:22. Okay, welcome back. We are showing a time of 10:23. Checking in with you, Kim, if we were able to locate what we were looking for?
Yes, actually, and I did just send the original signed conditions and mitigations page to Mary Darby, the, which was signed in February 5, 2021. That mitigation is correctly, it's not opening now, but it correctly states that those areas shall be fenced off. And so, yes, that is a typo.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, and we'll just be sure to include that in our verbiage on our motion, just as amended here today.
Thank you.
Kim, I just wanted, this is Director Darby, I just wanted a clarification on who was that document signed by, because I thought you said Mary Darby in February.
I'm sorry, I sent, I sent you the, yes, it was not signed by Mary Darby. It was signed by the applicant, and it was just sent to Director Darby.
Thank you, Kim. I appreciate that, the clarification, and looking for action still from the commissioners, and just be sure to include the as amended here today.
Madam Chair?
Please.
Barring further discussion, I'm prepared to offer a motion.
Yes, please.
I move that the planning commission find that the major use permit UP 20-13, applied for by RMI Venture on property located at 22644 Jerusalem Grade Road, Middletown, further described as APN 136-051-04, will not have a significant effect on the environment and therefore a mitigated negative declaration shall be approved with the findings listed in the staff report dated April 14, 2022, and as amended here today. Second?
Motion second, do you have a roll call vote? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the planning commission find that the major use permit UP 20-13, applied for by RMI Venture on property located at 22644 Jerusalem Grade Road, Middletown, further described as APN 136-051-04, does meet the requirements of Section 51.4 and Article 27, Section 1, Sub IIIIGII of the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and the major use permit be granted, subject to the conditions and with the findings listed in the staff report dated April 14, 2022, and as amended here today. Second?
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the planning commission, an appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh calendar day following the commission's final determination. Thank you, Kim, and staff for that report. We are moving on to office news. Director Darby, nice to see you.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much. It's so great to be back and to see you all. I do have a few updates. I would like to start with our new hires for our department. Yay. So we have a new chief building official. His name is, thank you, Andrew, you've done a great job. His name is William, he goes by Bill, William Collins. He's our new chief building official, and he's jumped right in and is doing great things for our department. We also have a promotion within our department, and that is Trish Turner. She's now our new assistant planner, and she's jumping right in, and she's working on lot mergers and fun stuff in the subdivision world. We have two conditional offers that are out right now for two assistant planners. One has background in economic development and housing, and the other one has just background in land use, and we have conditional offers, and hopefully everything will go through, and we'll bring those to a board. At the board of supervisors hearing the other day, we were approved a position allocation for a community development technician to help with our complaints in our department. So we'll have one person that's dedicated towards that, and they'll be able to rapidly answer citizens' and residents' complaints, so we're excited about that as well. I wanted to bring back up to you that June 9, that our planning commission hearing is going to be a conflict with the budget hearing process, and so we need to decide whether or not we will have that meeting at another location, or whether or not we will adjourn that meeting. So we still have one additional month before we make that decision, but I wanted to keep that on your radar.
Does that need to be agendized?
I was gonna, to kind of clarify, does that need to be, if we're going to discuss it and make a decision, does that need to be an agenda item on an upcoming meeting? So that, so that we can make a decision?
I think that would be the best option. If you were going to choose to continue a regularly scheduled meeting of your commission, that would be, the best option would be for the commission to make that decision at a meeting.
Okay.
Collectively.
So if we can maybe put that on for another, maybe an agenda item or something on the next meeting, we can discuss it?
Yes, so Jim, I would like to make a note that for our next planning commission hearing, that we agendize the June 9 conflict with our planning regularly, planning, regularly scheduled planning commission hearing. Okay, new protocols. So recommendation is that I saw on the agenda that Jim put on today, that he put the update for the zoning administrator up front. So I do like having the updates at the end. However, in my zoning update sheet, I will have any new changes that I, that's gonna affect the planning commission hearing that date, I will add it to that. So I'm gonna have him reverse that again.
Okay.
Also, I will ensure that all comments from previously staff reports or projects are included in our packets that go forward, because some of these projects are older projects, and they have kind of shifted hands through planners, so I'll make sure that the comments are attached to the staff reports. And then I just wanted to, this is tentative, but I wanted to let you know that the revised cannabis ordinance is up for a second update. I am proposing that that update goes before the board of supervisors on May the 10. It is still tentative, but that is my proposal. Following that, I am proposing that we have our workshops for the ordinance in mid-May, and there will be a video coming out with all the updates of the logistics and the workshops. And that will conclude my presentation, our update.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any questions for Director Darby or anything like that?
No, thank you.
No.
I think I have some questions. So like for, if we could get an update on like how many, kind of like how we got at the end of each project, like, oh, in this area, there's this many projects, so many are pending, how many that we've approved already are, can I say, like functioning? How many are not? Just to kind of see how much we're approving and how many are actually like going through with it.
Or also maybe like what's coming down the pipeline, what, what areas we've approved, what's, what's there, what's denied? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and kind of like whatever we've already approved, kind of how they're doing, because we kind of just like approve them and then we never hear from them again type of thing.
Okay.
Just like a little update on.
That's great. So that's actually a great question, and our Cannabis Program Manager, Andrew Amalon, has already prepared such information. He has prioritized all projects, and at our next meeting or one thereafter, I will coordinate with him between that and the revised cannabis ordinance to provide you with an update on where we are with all the projects.
Yeah, because my concern is kind of like how, when they give us a report and say, okay, we're gonna use this much water, and then to see after, let's say, their first year or the first couple of years, if that's averaging out to what their estimates are. Yeah, just, that was pretty much what the information I'm looking for.
Do you have something to say?
I was just going to point out that your commission always has the option of asking about cumulative impact information, because that is, is a requirement to be analyzed under SEQA, so not just for past approved or upcoming approved cannabis projects, but any other uses that may, may be cumulatively impacted by the project itself. So that is always an option that you can ask for that information from, from staff.
But I do want to alert you as well that with the revised cannabis ordinance that I will be presenting in May, you will have sections or topics that will cover cumulative impacts. It will cover tree removal, and it will, it will also cover recommendations for updates to our drought management plan, as well as our hydrology reports, as well as other things.
But those are the highlights. Okay?
Excellent. Thank you, Director Darby. If we don't have any further questions, we will go ahead and adjourn the meeting.